Welcome everyone to Valley Homes on TV, the Milpitas edition. I'm Todd Flesner, joined along with Debbie Indah Geridono.
Hi Todd.
Hey Deb, how you doing?
Doing great!
Terrific! We're glad the folks have tuned in to us here on Channel 26. Monday, Wednesday and Fridays, what, 5:30?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Saturday and Sundays, 9:00 AM.
Yeah, very good.
I'll learn this, we've been doing this seven years and every once in a while...
We'll learn it.
Eventually I'll get our show time down. But we're glad you've tuned in and joined us here. We love to bring you information, news, updates about what's going on here in our local community of Milpitas.
Right.
So, thanks for joining us. Deb, do you want to introduce our guest today?
I would love to. A personal friend of mine, and we've worked together on other things and projects in the city. This is Mr. Danny Lau. He is the President of our Milpitas Unified School District Board.
Terrific. Well, I know there's lots going on with the schools these days.
Lots, and you know, schools, Todd, are such an important component of the quality of a community. They certainly add to home values and keep buyers interested in coming into our community.
Absolutely.
So, it's an important ingredient.
Well, it is. It really is an integral part of the fabric of our community. So, well Danny, we're glad you've joined us.
Yes, I'm happy to be here.
Terrific. Well, for the folks who may not know you, why don't you just give us a little bit about yourself? Tell us a bit about your background, how long you've been here in Milpitas, and just introduce yourself to our audience.
Okay, thank you. Like most people in Milpitas, I'm an immigrant. My family, myself, we moved here when I was young. I grew up in Modesto, in high school.
Okay.
And then I went to Cal Poly, San Francisco.
A good school.
Yeah, got my degree in computer science. And then I moved up here in Milpitas, and I've been here ever since. I've been here since 1980.
True. That's a good...
Thirty-five years.
Period of time. And you've seen a lot of change there.
I've seen a lot of change. And I remember riding my bike around here, and it's all empty along this area. The city hall just opened, and the grocery store was called Alpha Bena, something like that, you know, it was there.
So, what do you like about today, living in the local area? What's the attraction for you to stay?
It's just a nice place to be. I enjoy the small town atmosphere. I enjoy all the wonderful restaurants in the area. I enjoy the foothills. I go up there and hike once in a while. The water's fabulous, the people are friendly. And you know, if you were to tell me that back in 1980 I was going to be here for that long, I would say, "No way!" Well, I've been here all this year because I just loved it. I enjoyed it here, and I wanted to be here.
Well, and you've gotten involved in the community as well. You've not just lived here, but you've...
Oh my gosh, he's dipped in with both feet.
That's right. So, talk to us, you're now on the school board, you serve as the President of the school board.
Yes.
Tell us a bit about that process. What is it that led you to become so involved with our schools?
Well, I have three kids. Two of them went through the school system, graduated, now working. I still got one at the high school. And I always wanted to basically support the community, kind of give back. I've been here for so long, I want to see the community to continue to get better. And a few years ago, you know, I got a call from different people, and said, "Hey, you know, we have a spot open in the school district, why don't you apply?"
Right.
And I thought about it, I said, "Well, it's time to give back." So I applied, and luckily, they chose me to serve, and I've been serving for the past four and a half years.
Yeah, and you actually went through an election.
Yeah, I went through two elections.
Two elections, so that's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, it was great. I mean, yeah, I lived all this, all my life, but until the election, I did not go to every single neighborhood. Right? You should go to your park, or everywhere you live. But through the election, I was really getting to know Milpitas even better. You walk the neighborhood, you see the people, you talk to them.
And I have to say, being President of the school board, that's an, I think it's an honor. It's an honor for, I mean, you being selected by your peers.
Yes.
And not just electorate that puts you on the school board, but those that are serving on the board have chosen you to take the leadership role. And I think that speaks miles of you, Danny, so...
Yeah, well, thank you. And so, we do have five board members, and the President is elected, selected within the five board members. And this year, I was fortunate to be chosen by my fellow board member to be President. I think the role of the President, you know, is to be leadership and to lead the district, but at the same time, you know, it's a team. Right? I don't make all the decisions, it's a teamwork.
So let me, I'll turn it back over to Todd, but let me break it down for those folks that sort of don't understand. What exactly does the school board do for the community?
That's a great question. You know, instead of talking about what the board do, I think we talk about how things are connected. So we all know, school, and within the school, you have teachers, teacher that in charge of a classroom. Well, who's in charge of the school? Is the school principal. He or she is responsible for all the teachers. Then the next question is, well, who's responsible for the principal? Now, the way it works in public schools is, every school belongs to a school district. There are schools that make up of K-4A, there are schools that make up of a bunch of high schools, and together they make a school district. In Milpitas, all the schools, elementary, middle school, and high school, make up the Milpitas School District. So in a school district, we have our superintendent. So Kerry, our superintendent, is responsible for all the school principals. That's how the chain goes up. Then the next question is, well, who's responsible for the superintendent? Who hired him or her? That's the job of the school board. Our main job is to hire the right person to lead our district. Then the next question, well, who's responsible for the school board? Well, that's you. The voters.
Right.
You guys put us there. So ultimately, it's the board that's responsible.
Okay, okay, that's a nice way to bring it up.
Yeah, good. So, yeah, there's that connection then back to the community.
Yes.
And that accountability to the community to make sure that our schools are serving all of our kids.
Yes.
Well, that said, you know, what are the issues now that really are being weighed in the school district? Because I know you've got some priorities and some things that are there. What are the things that you're spending most of your time and effort on right now?
The biggest issue right now is really planning for enrollment growth. And I think most of the viewers know that Milpitas is growing. The bar is coming online in a couple of years. There are a lot of new housing building over there, and according to our city estimate, you know, we're going to add another 30,000, 40,000 in the next 20 years. And with all these people coming in, it will bring kids with them, which means we've got to start planning for the future of the school district. Okay, now, one of the things that people always complain about is the high school is too big. And they're absolutely right. This high school was originally built for 1,800 people. Right now, we have 3100. And the next five years is projected to grow to 3,600. And the traffic is bad, you know, my son go to there, and he said, you know, "At lunchtime, the light is low." So we are looking into all the possibilities. One thing we can do to relieve the high school congestion. How can we provide a good education at the same time making sure that it just doesn't get overcrowded?
So the high school's sort of the primary issue at this stage.
That, and then another new elementary school at the transit area. Because, again, they put in, what is it, 5,000 units or something in the next few years? And that is a lot of people in that corridor, a lot of money to express to it. So, working for the city, we acquired that's a land, and it's going to be a park there, and we're building a new elementary school. And we're excited because it's been, what, over 40 years since the last school was built in Milpitas?
Wow, okay.
So right now, we're working, again, with the city to lay out. We're working with an architect to decide, and really deciding a 21st century school. It's not going to be just traditional room, room, room of the teachers. We want it to be flexible, we want to increase student learning, we want able to have a facility where you could have a cook gallery, you could have small teamwork, we do a lot of project-based learning. We want to have individual, you know, learning themselves, they want to study or read on their own. So, we want a campus that is really flexible, that uses new technology. And I think, I'm excited. Hopefully, it'll come on in the next, maybe three or four years. So that's the plan.
Hopefully, you'll get to see it under your...
Yes.
Under your leadership.
I hope so, yes, it is.
That would be great.
Yes.
So, folks that are looking out there, watching the show, or that are interested, how can somebody get involved? We talked about the elementary schools, and what do they, the PTAs, and you have land site, you have some other kind of committees. How can a person get involved, other than being on the school board?
Well, first of all, if you have kids that go to Milpitas School, they're usually going to enroll. Attend your PTA year, there's a school site council. Every school has newsletter, make sure you read it, understand what's going on, and participate as much as you can. So when you get involved with your child's school, get to know the principal, they're very open to talking to you, and really support the school, there's all these needs. But even if you don't have kids in school, there's always needs that the school has. For example, we're doing a lot of project-based learning, and one of the principals at the elementary school told me that, "It'd be nice to get community members to come in and evaluate, give us feedback on our second grade or third grade's projects." Right? How do you do project-based learning? Because at work, everything is based on project. And I've been working in the high-tech industry for over 30 years, and it's really about working together as a team, you're doing projects, and so we're educating our kids to do that. To the extent that we can reach out to our community, get people who know how to do this, just come in, get feedback. And then at the high school level, we're always looking for mentors. Kids that aren't sure what they want to do, and they want to get into this industry, but there's no one to talk to.
Well, I hear Todd can become a math tutor. Off my discussion about the high school and math program that Todd sent us in, I had to throw it in. I'm sorry, you guys.
Well, you know, that kind of leads into our next topic here, which is, you know, the ratings for schools. I understand that that process is changing. There used to be these API scores and STAR testing, and now there's Common Core, and we're, I'm not quite sure where we are with that. I'm sure I'm not the only one that has questions about that. Maybe you can fill folks into, how is that...
Yes, the API, right? Because we're implementing Common Core, the state have a new test, it's called Smarter Balance. Or I had that long-term California Student Performance Assessment, whatever it is. So this past spring, for students in grade 3, 4, 8, and 11th grade took the test. And just this past few weeks, we got the test back. And it's a, the test is totally different than the API. In the old test, you basically give it a question, you have a choice of A, B, C, D, you just pick one.
Right.
And the new test, you have to explain your answers.
Oh wow, okay.
Okay? You have to show how things are done. So, it really...
Some more thinking skills.
Exactly. And that's what it is at work. You don't just say, "Here's the answer," you have to sort of...
They don't let you just guess at work what the answer is, right?
Exactly. So I think the test is better. People are still digesting, well, what does that mean? How do we compare? And so, we did get, I say, get our score back from individual students have the test, and the school district got the numbers. And overall, I think we did pretty well. Everybody wants to compare. Well, how do we do compared to other schools? Compared to the whole, say, county, we're above the average. Compared to the state, we're, you know, way above average. So I think we're doing, we're doing pretty good, but still, that's just a baseline. Our goal is to continue to improve on that baseline. Once we look at a school, we analyze it between English and math, understand where a student doing well is, what area they need to improve on, and we can focus on that. So my son, he took it as a year in his way in his way, and we just got our data back. You know, they're probably good, but there's certain areas that I'm sure that he can improve on. And I think the teacher and the principal are looking at all the data, analyzing them, and seeing what changes we need to make, and what kind of help the students need, so they can continue to improve.
So there's feedback then for individual students in terms of where they are, how they're progressing with their learning, but then also, then that's used on a district-wide basis as well then to take a look at...
The school has a set of numbers again, and at the district level, we're always getting a set of numbers.
Okay.
Okay? So, I think we're still digesting it, and we're still understanding what that means, and we'll be putting through a new improvement.
Well, I'm sure that, just like API was used as a measuring stick of one, you know, community versus another community, when people are looking at schools. I imagine this will probably evolve in that way as well.
Everybody wants to compare. I think that's, that's just a common...
I don't think you're going to get around...
And that's okay.
Well, let's delve into, we've talked a little bit about the schools, of course, the negative aspect of the high school being overcrowded. What generally do you see as the positive attributes of our Milpitas schools?
You know, the school has been started for about, what, seven, eight weeks now? And last month, there were a lot of active school night. Every school had active school night. And I attended, you know, several of them. I think one of the positive is that there were a lot of parent engagement.
Good.
And studies show that the more the parents are involved, the better the student will perform.
Okay.
And I went to, I said, a few of the active school night, and the gymnasium was just packed with people.
Oh, that's great.
And that's really good. And it really showed that parents are engaged, they care, they want their kids to perform, and they talk to the teacher, they talk to the principal, and I think that's probably one of the best things.
And that, sounds like that'll strengthen and shore up the schools, just like the parent involvement.
Definitely, you know. And, you know, we did some survey with our parents in the past, and in some cases, because we have new parents or immigrant parents that don't understand about how the school system works here, we have what we call Parent University, that we have throughout the year, that parents can come and learn about how the school operates, what I think that they can do to help their students. And we want to reach out to them and say, "Hey, there's a lot of things you can do to support." You know, it's more than just, "Did you do your homework?" Okay? It's really understanding what's going on in the school, or somebody needs, and really having engagement with the teachers and the principals.
Good. Well, I know, again, in your role as Board President now, you're, you know, active in leading the district and, you know, achieving some things. But let's look ahead, you know, a few years, perhaps, and project that in the future. What are some of the things that you hope you'll be able to look back and be able to say, "I was able to help accomplish this with our school district"?
Yeah. As I mentioned, our biggest challenge right now is how are we going to handle the enrollment growth, not just for the next five years, but for the next 15 and 20 years. Now, obviously, you know, by that time, I won't be around, but we were able to make decisions now that is not going to handicap the school board or the superintendent 15, 20 years down the road. So whatever thing we need to do in terms of decision, policy, programs, we have to not only look things in the next few years, but look out what's going to, what's going to look at 15, 20 years. And because Milpitas is going through a lot of change, and I see more changes coming, and we have to start thinking about it, and start planning for it. So, to me, I think that's the biggest challenge.
All right. And I guess the wrap-up question is, your own personal goals? Are you going to, you know, be running for office again there with the school board, or what are your plans?
I don't know what my plans are, I'll be honest with you. You know, I just started serving my first second term, so I've got only three more years to go.
Are there term limits, or no?
There are no term limits. You know, we have Marshall and Bill that served more than 20 years, and I don't plan to be here that long. So, I have at least three more years to support the school, and I plan to just dive right in and do what I can. In terms of my future goal, you know, walk across the bridge when it comes. Right now, I don't have any other plans to do anything else, other than to support the school in the next three years.
Oh, good. Well, Danny, thanks so much for coming and spending some time with us, introducing yourself to our community, and for, you know, the work that you do on behalf of our families and our students here.
Absolutely.
And supporting a very, very important institution in our community, our schools.
Yes. Well, thank you. I enjoyed the reunion.
Thank you very much for your time and what you do for service for our community, Danny. Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome, everyone. I'm Debbie Indah Geridono, along with Todd Flesner. You're watching Channel 26, Valley Homes on TV. So we are here to do kind of a market wrap-up, and we talk about what's important in terms of the lending industry, and what some housing statistics are in Milpitas.
Well, you know, just trying to keep people up to date with what's happening in the environment around us here.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'm going to pick on you, since you are leading mortgage broker. Just a couple of days ago, Sunday Homes, San Jose Mercury, talked about the new rules in mortgage and lending. Why don't you tell folks about that?
There's a lot that's happening with that. The, there's a new regulatory agency called the CFPB, the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau, that was a result of Dodd-Frank legislation, which is outgrowth of the subprime implosion that we saw. And there've been a lot of new rules, a lot of things that have been happening, but most recently, as of October 3rd, there's a whole new set of forms and disclosures now that are required with a loan. We're going through something now that's called TRID, this Truth in Lending, and the RESPA, Real Estate Settlement Practices Act, being combined into one new form, basically. It used to have a good faith estimate and a truth in lending form.
So I imagine that would kind of let the borrowers know upfront what their potential costs are, and how that's going to affect the long-term, how much they're going to be paying for that property.
Exactly. And people will look at those, and they won't know it's really easy to understand. So those have been reworked in such a way. And it's been labeled as the "No Before You Ow" initiative from the CFPB. And so, I really like it. It makes the terms of the loan much clearer to somebody as they're looking at the prospect of getting a loan. Makes it much easier to be able to compare one loan to another.
And I would suspect anyone even refinancing a property, they'll get the full scope of those costs.
Absolutely.
And weigh that, whether they, whether it makes sense or not.
Right. So they're now one form that you get. It's a loan disclosure form, that when you apply for a loan, ask for a loan disclosure, and it will describe the terms of the loan.
Required in three days to provide that?
Exactly. Three days from the point of application.
Point of application, okay.
That we need to get that out. Now, one thing that's a change, though, is at closing. You and I have been through this fire drill a number of times. It gets down to the very end, the loan documents get in, and everybody's hustling to get there to the closing table, right? And sometimes, as someone who's borrowing money or buying a home, you don't even see the numbers until...
Right.
Right when you show up to sign.
Right.
And it's been a real problem, I think, in the industry, a lot of last-minute things. Well, now you're going to be required to get that closing disclosure statement three days prior to actually having to sign. So you get an opportunity to review that, ask your questions, and make sure that you're clear. And can it take people out from underneath the crucible of that time crunch at the very end?
Todd, I think I would agree with you. I mean, this is one of most, if not everyone, their largest purchase.
Absolutely.
We're not talking about buying a car here, a home, you know, for a lifetime or an investment property. I think those disclosures need to be clear.
Absolutely. Well, there's some procedural changes that are going on with this that are making that possible. Lenders are taking on much more of the responsibility of preparing those final disclosures. It used to be that we'd wait for the escrow officer to complete that closing estimate for us, and give us all the fees and those sort of things. And oftentimes, they wouldn't send that to us until they had the loan documents. So, you know, one was dependent upon the other. Well, now, the lending institutions are taking control of that process, getting those fees upfront, and enabling that information to get out much, much earlier in the process.
Terrific, terrific.
So I think there are a lot of good reforms there. You'll see a couple of new terms as well in those disclosures. APR is something that'll continue to be there, to be able to compare one loan against another.
And tell folks, what is APR?
Annual percentage rate.
Okay.
So it's a method that you can really weigh the, not only the interest rate of the loan, but the costs involved with that. But there are some things about APR that can be kind of manipulated. There are a couple of items, and there are variables that can vary from loan to loan. Rules being the prepaid interest charge. So there's another new disclosure that's going to be tip, total interest paid. And so that'll be the total interest over the life of that loan. And that'll be, I think, a good tool for borrowers, to not only look at that APR, but also the tip, and it helps then to really look at what the full cost of borrowing is over the lifetime of that loan.
Okay. And I know as our industry adjusts to those changes, you know, just like the airports, when we used to go through the, you know, the, the, oh, the takers, oh, they take their shoes off, yeah. So we'll get used to that.
Absolutely. So, there'll be a little bit of time of adjustment as people get used to this. But as this becomes the new way of doing business, I think people are really going to like it, and it's going to, it'll change the way that we're running around at the end, and I think make it a better experience for people who are buying or refinancing.
Sounds good. And just before I break into the stats, where are we at with interest rates?
Interest rates remain historically low. Conforming loan, up to 417,000, 30 years, about 3.75% both interest rate and APR. So, rates are really, really low. As we come into the end of the calendar year, we're watching the Fed, to see what the Fed might be doing with loans.
Right, and there's some mixed signals about that. I've heard some economists say, "Yes, it's going to be raised before the end of the year." And then, just attended the California Association of Realtors Convention last week, here at San Jose, at the convention center, and one of the economists said, "No, it won't be till March," so...
Well, you know, so that's what everybody's watching. What's the Fed going to do? What's their policy going to be? And how does that impact interest rates moving forward?
All right.
How about on the real estate market front? How are we doing in Milpitas?
Well, I tell you, whether you're a buyer, you might like the numbers. If you're a seller, you won't like the numbers. What has happened is we've had a downward spiral. This is the first time I've reported in years that it's, because we were just ticking our way up. I don't, in June, the average price was around 975. It clicked up to a historic high. And then in July, it trickled below 900, so it was a 8-something. But I can tell you what it is for August. August, and the average price for Milpitas is 747,000.
So an adjustment.
An adjustment. And median price is 661,000. We've seen a hundred, almost $150,000 adjustment.
Okay.
I mean, that's huge. And the, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was August 2014. What am I saying? Okay. August 2015 is 854,786. So we're about 100,000 over last year, but we're a good 100, 125,000 less than we were three months ago. Okay? And then, the condo market, average price was 550,000, median 560, and not much changed. August 2014, average price is 542,000, and median price is 560. August 2014, average price is $542,000, and median price is $560,000. So, and probably, there's just a plethora of townhomes right now, so that's not shifted too much.
Okay.
Yeah.
So an interesting adjustment in the market.
Very interesting adjustment. I think we're seeing that really countywide. I heard a statistic at our local brokers meeting, there are 1,100 properties for sale in all Santa Clara County, and in one week's time, 306 of those 1,100 did price reductions.
Wow, okay.
So that's where we're seeing the tip of the iceberg. I'm hoping that things will level off. A home is priced right, if they're taking the current market into consideration, and is a good staged, good-looking property, it will sell. Getting foot traffic through the open houses, so there's buyers out there looking, but they're very, very choosy, very choosy.
Right.
And you're seeing that with your buyers you're working with.
Yeah. What I'm finding is, you know, folks who experienced going through the summer with the multiple offers and over-asking price, you know, a lot of them had pulled back during that timeframe. But now those folks are beginning to find properties, they're able to get into contract. So it's a little bit more even market for people who are looking to purchase.
Great. All right. Well, folks, stay tuned. We'll hopefully get another report in before the end of the year. If not, everybody have happy holidays. We're going to be over at a Taekwondo studio next week.
Yeah, we're going to get out of the studio and get out on the streets of Melpitas here for a little bit and take and introduce our visitors, our viewers to Taekwondo here in Melpitas.
How about, you want to give contact information, please?
Yeah, please. tflessner@opusadvisors.com is a great way to get ahold of me via email.
And for me, it's giordanodj, that's G-I-O-R-D-A-N-O-D-J at AOL.com. We'll see you folks soon. Thanks for watching Valley Homes on TV.